And their homeworks aren't always very long, so as long as they stay caught up, it was low stress. And to see kids that usually typically struggle with math actually start having success, that kind of made it a little bit more enjoyable for all of them. Like I said, it was a confidence builder, kids, kids that couldn't solve three x equals negative nine, all of a sudden be able to solve how far, you know, they can, or how far their car actually moves when they're going forty-five miles an hour and they look down at their cell phones for five seconds. For them to actually apply that and learn and say, oh my god, that is a long ways. We probably shouldn't be doing that. You know, it's kind of, kind of cool to hear him, hear him talk about it. But some of the things I put in there for the applications that they had to learn about was insurance, credit card loans, credit card debt, on how that is not a very smart way to pay for things. Student loans, most of them are going off to college and their parents can't afford to pay for it, so they gotta find a way to pay for their college anyway. So it talks about what type of loans you're looking for, what's the interest, what's the payback gonna be, what's a good choice, what's a bad choice, you know, car loans, home loans, and how if you borrow a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at eight percent, you're gonna be paying on that a really long time, compound simple interest. But I asked the kids what were some of their fun, their favorite lessons. They talked about the texting and driving one, the growth and decay situations, on how their money can grow or lose money in, in, in the stocks and bonds and all that. You know, other situations. One of them that I think, even though we probably don't want to admit it, but blood alcohol content, you know, for adults, teachers, parents, whoever, you know, some of them were like, that's real, you know, and so they, they really bought into understanding how, how that works. And like I said, radical functions with skid marks, those are the ones they really, really enjoyed throughout the semester. And then back up here where I said I loved the process from April to September, we started school before most of these other districts did, and so we grant, our content ended about April eighteenth, and so KSD recommended us doing a career project, so that's where we're at right now in the class, is students are out researching careers they might want to go into and figuring out how, how is math involved in their careers? How was, you know, whether you get out and become, become a businessman or you become a, you know, secretary at an office, you're still gonna be using mathematics whether you want to think about it that way or not. And so a lot of them are finding that out currently, and so they should be finishing that up this Friday, and then we're off into their, their finals on Monday and Tuesday. So we, we started with this, we had eleven students take the ACT. Like you said, we had six students that scored between a thirteen and seventeen, four between eighteen and twenty, and then we had one student above a twenty-one. And I kind of put the class that they would have tested into at the college beside it. And so out of, you know, eleven students that had an ACT, none of those students would have met the college requirements of a twenty-two here in the state of Kansas. And we had thirty-one students take the compass, and in between a zero and forty-five, we had thirty students and only one student tested intermediate. So out of the forty, forty-two students we had to finish the class, only two of them tested in intermediate algebra to start the year. And so that's the step right below college algebra. And none of these classes, basic math, beginning algebra, intermediate algebra, actually count towards your college graduation. So if you do go to college, you're gonna have to get that college algebra class in, and so some of them are gonna be taking nine hours before they can get to one that counts towards their graduation degree. So I thought, when this class, I think, was a big opportunity for it. And so as of Friday, this is kind of where we stood. We only had three students opt to take the ACT score, but all three of them scored a twenty-three or higher on it. And then we had thirty-two students that have taken the Accuplacer, that has replaced the compass, and we've had only five students now testing college math. We had seven move up to beginning algebra, sixteen move up into intermediate, and then four others testing the college algebra. And then I still have seven left to test because they were either gone for softball, baseball, golf, tennis, forensics, debate, illness, so they'll probably get that done this week. And then all the students in the intermediate algebra actually have an opportunity at the college to test again, to get into college algebra if they so choose. And they've also given them a study website to help them out, so, you know, from where we were, I think that this class showed that it has some value to it. Once again, if, if students take, take it for what it, what it can, what it can be. So I believe that's all, all I have, if anything we have, or actually, I'm glad we joined it, and I'm excited that we're gonna get the opportunity to do it again next year if everything finishes out right. Do we got any questions for us?
So does this count for math credits? Does this fulfill math requirements or is it a collective?
It, I believe, and I'd have to ask, you know, Ms. Smith, because she's the one that's kind of worked with this, but I believe it counts as a math credit for Garden City High School. It does not count as a core class for NCAA clearinghouse. So it's, you know, it's, it's one of those where it counts towards our graduation, if not to the next, you know, level, be clearinghouse, sarcasm, or whatever. But all these students, you know, I think I, I remember at the beginning of the year, I pulled them, I think out of the forty-two, I think eleven of them said they would have taken a different math class. This was an option than the other ones who said they were done because they already met the requirements. So I think it gave an opportunity to reach more kids, keep them in a core class, keep them engaged as they prepare for college, whether, you know, thirty of them might have not taken the math class and really struggled in the next years, it might have cost parents some extra dollars to retake class later on, so.
And then just wondering, is this limited to seniors or seniors?
This year, it was limited to seniors because the state was, it's a pilot in the state to keep everything kind of the same for all the data that's happening to seniors. And I'm gonna find out tomorrow for sure, or Wednesday for sure, if, since we've completed the pilot and we're opting in, that if we can have, to continue it, I think we have to have one class that follows the pilot again next year, so seniors only, but I think after that, since it would be on us, that we can have whoever we want in that, that class.
Couple of questions for you. Can you go back to the slide before this one? So how many, how many boys and girls in the class, out of those forty-two?
Half an hour. If I had to guess, we were probably sixty, forty females to males. Somewhere roughly that, I'm only gonna say off the top of my head, because I have one class that has only two males in it. So the rest of them are young ladies, so that's why I'm gonna say it's probably sixty to forty, but my first hour has more males, so.
And based on the pilot, those numbers there, was that the goal? I mean, what was the outcome from getting at, at the training that you went? They said, okay, at the end of this class, you should have what?
That's, that's a good, good question. Where, where we're different than everybody else is, we even just kind of understood some of the, the expectations of the state. We just took it as seniors, if they wanted to be in it, they can join. Where when I went to the first training after we enrolled, everybody else was talking about how they had kids only at nineteen through twenty-ones on their ACTs. And so their expectation, with most of them, would be to where they needed it. And when I was bringing up, well, ours is between thirteen and seventeens, and so we kind of, I meant, my principle, our goal for, you know, this year was to try to get twenty-five percent of those students to college algebra, and at least eighty percent of them all bumped up at least one or two classes. And so I think I need to get four more students into college algebra to get to twenty-five percent, but, you know, I think the jump of the twenty-three students from basic math up to intermediate algebra was a pretty good jump for us.
No, I like the numbers I see, and then I also like the curriculum. I mean, I, you know, it's a shame that it has, they have to be in that, that percentage, you know, thirteen to twenty-one, because I could see that class helping a lot of students that might not be at that thirteen to twenty-one.
Well, my other class to teach is kind of a mixture of juniors and seniors that have already taken Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. And so it's advanced algebra, and so some of this material, I've actually pushed in there, just because they're, you know, seniors that might have scored a twenty-one or twenty-two, but, you know, it's an application on how to make their, you know, apply something. So having that kind of flexibility with advanced algebra, been able to push that into, so.
You're the only one that thought?
I was the only one in our district that is top of class, yes.
Are we planning on adding more teachers to that, to Northview?
Well, right now, it's probably gonna be driven by enrollment and how many kids are interested in it. Until we get the idea that, or the permission that we can kind of expand a little further than we already have, but right now, you know, Donald's the only teacher on it. If we need to expand and, and have this be the class that he teaches in there, that would be great, because I'm all for having more kids in this class. That's why we went with the two extra sections beyond what the state originally said as far as a pilot. But we wait on, we wait to get that kind of, and, and, you know, my family is living proof of, of something for this class. My, I have a sophomore, a daughter's a sophomore, who I'd love to have in this class as a, a junior and moving forward, especially being a parent whose daughter, you know, struggled in math and we ended up paying a thousand dollars by the time we got college algebra, by the time we finished basic algebra, intermediate algebra, college algebra. You know, we were one of these families, so I, I'm a big proponent, advocate of something like this for kids and families.
I'm a huge fan of college-bound students ramping up their rigor their senior year. And it seems like there's been a little bit of a history of, or a tendency to coast senior year, and I like the way that this helps go the other direction. And I just, I just wish we could do more, like Tim said, more things like this. I wish we could teach Cornell note-taking to all students. You know, there's parts of the Avid program that I think would be excellent for all of our students. It just seems like we're just, it comes down to the dollar mostly, but.
I really think that's starting to, that's the direction schools are gonna start going into, because the NCAA, and I'm gonna speak from athletics perspective, they're making it harder for you to be a qualifier. So you have to have sixteen core classes now to become a Division One athlete with a GPA of, you know, like two point five, and then an ACT score of twenty or higher. And so if you want to get sixteen core classes, there's, you gotta average four a year, or you're taking five or six alternating years. So I think the NCAA stepped up their game of requirements, so I think it'll slowly trickle down to the next level with us. And I think just having, you know, opportunities like this where, you know, it doesn't say calculus in front of it, it doesn't say trig in front of it, will attract more students as we start having more and more students go through and have the positive results. Because kids aren't, kids aren't dumb in this generation, they, they research it. How many, how many people in this room use trig, trigonometry on databases? And very few of us would raise our hand to say, you know, there might be a few of us, but, you know, is, is trig a valuable option for seniors that would never use it afterwards? You know, and so you take that kind of way and you, you're really kind of enforcing, or, you know, giving this idea of this class where it's real-world application, it's gonna put you in, in the business kind of model of how to problem solve and figure out the side of the box. I think more and more kids will end up coming to this class or coming to classes like this, you know, like a robotics class that, you know, I think we, you guys highlighted a couple of weeks ago or a month ago. Kids are gonna start flocking to those classes that give them the hands-on, the detailed learning, the, you know, those type of curriculum classes as they get older, because that's what's going to happen at the next level. So I'm glad, like I said, I had the opportunity to do this, and I'm out recruiting students to that class, and the alls are, are, you know, the juniors, you know, they're gonna be seniors, is, what math, math classes do you enroll? They say, you know, they don't ask them the ACT score, and if it's not above twenty-two, I'm like, no, begin the class. And so a lot of them are signing up, so.
And a lot of them, though, that's too late. I mean, I really think we need to start younger in our freshman classes and say, you know, if this is your goal, this is how we're gonna get there. This is how we're gonna ramp up. We're gonna take these classes in this order, and this is what our goals are, and we're gonna take ACT practice tests, we're gonna do these things to get those, those students to where they can achieve those goals. But anyway, that's kind of a side note, but I think this is going in that direction.
I'm a big proponent of four, you take four years of math, because even the last district I came from was, we really tried to force kids into, you know, taking calculus as a senior, you know, just because, what's wrong with advancing your mind and your capacity?
And I'm not just speaking of the college-bound students, but them for sure. I want every student to get the most of their education experience as possible, but for sure the ones that, it's, it's just a, it's a different, that next step is completely different than high school. And a lot of stu-, you can tell that to a lot of students, but until they get there, they don't really believe it. But I think that also goes to some things that we talked about with the intervention program. I mean, you know, I was still flabbergasted when Carl was teaching to the sixth grade, and he's like, well, they're in intervention. I'm like, well, where's the math interventions? Oh, there's just reading. Well, what about the math ones? And now we're moving in that direction, so, which I think is gonna help this as well. So, and maybe we can put you out of this class, so.
That'd be cool, too, on that, onto this class.
I know after Mr. Brown talked, I would be kind of interested to see what, what the data would say in twelve years, if kids that go through this, you know, pre- kindergarten snapshots, snapshots, or Snapchats, or whatever you wanna call it.
I hope they're on Snapchat, yeah.
If the ones that go through the program and, and go through the ranks, if they, if they hasn't, you know, leads into a higher academic standing than the ones that don't go through it, like you said, we're missing in our districts.
Another thing we're missing in this district, and I know I'm talking a lot, but I've had time to think about this, being camped out in Vegas with a snowstorm keeping away, is every student in Garden City should graduate bilingual. I mean, the opportunities we have for that to occur is just outstanding. I mean, that's something that, you know, we embrace, but I don't know if we really promote to the extent of our capabilities.
But in this career project, that we, the kids have to evaluate their strengths and weaknesses in this job, and like when I was reading through them, a lot of them I knew were bilingual in my class, I'd be like, how can we ever put this as a strength?
Oh my gosh.
And they're like, I never thought of it as a strength, it's just a, just what I've always been used to. And I was like, you need to use that to your advantage as a strength, because some of us that aren't bilingual, you know, wish we were.
Yeah, and then when they get older, they'll, then they'll appreciate it, but now it just seems like it's taken for granted. But hands down, I mean, you go to the top of the pile on applicants if you're bilingual in any industry. Anyway, I'll stop talking now.
I did have a question. I was wondering, when you described the program, you talked about it being interactive and having a work book and dealing with real-world world problems and having to feed that. Is there any particular aspect of the program that we could, that we felt was the most effective in reaching these results that would maybe could translate into some other classes where it would be more helpful to those classes?
I, I think the thing that, to answer that would be the ones that tie into what the kids are doing now. Like I said, texting and driving, you know, I think, I actually skipped ahead of that because it was the day the police officer was pulling kids over in the parking lot or texting and driving, they were coming to the loop. And so I incorporated that, so kind of had their attention. Like you talked about, you know, you know, skid marks, kind of touch, you know, some of those kids are just driving that all for the first time, you know, type of thing. So anything I think that affects them in the immediate, you know, situation is, I think the best way that they learn is you have their attention. They're, they're interested in it, and they'll keep their attention because it's what they know. I know, you know, I can't, I can't remember which teacher did it, but they were doing a lot of polls on Twitter, because kids are always, and they were sending their questions out on Twitter as polls, and they were getting a lot of feedback, and so they had their attention because it's where they want to be. And I think that's, that's a, that's a direction I think we have to kind of look at, because technology's not gonna disappear on us. And so how are you gonna keep their attention away from where they already want to be on?
Well, that's really good information, and I think not just for the high schools, but I think all of our teachers, if they keep that in their awareness when they're trying to, to teach a lesson or deliver information, it's really gonna help the children receive it and learn more from it, so that's, that's good to know, because it seemed like it took all the factors out of the program, and it, it really has compounded in a way to, to have even better results than we've been on the one.
The other one, the process of buying a car at a low cost, because a lot of them are getting very rough to college, they think they need a new car, and so if their attention was there, then the next thing, I couldn't get their attention away from car shopping and trying to find that loan rate that they could afford, so.
I was thinking a lot of things like you've been about, if, if, if there's any way, I mean, I know this is a title with the state and they have, you know, qualifications for it, but I wa-, I wonder if a class like this would even inspire kids to continue their education when they can see the real-world benefits of it.
Yeah.
Like having this, if we did extra classes like on our own, if we did not necessarily have to use students that, and I don't know how you could do it, but I'm just saying, like, kids, kids can be inspired when they understand the real-world benefits of education because, you know, they don't get that, but the things that you're talking about, like cars, buying cars, those type of things, I mean, that might actually inspire if a person would continue at least into mini-college, I mean, who knows, you know, just to continue their.
You're right. Ms. Scott and I have talked several times about taking the components of this and, and putting it into other classes like advanced algebra and some of the other things that we offer. And we're hoping to get and find out if the state's willing to allow us, because this is a program that we've, we purchased through Agile Minds, so there are some components that we can take and utilize, and there are other ones that, that we don't necessarily get a chance to utilize because it's a part of what they sell us. So you're buy the program or you, or you don't buy the program. But yeah, there are, there are a lot of different things that we talked about, moving into some of these other courses. And as far as taking some of these things and putting them into other areas, this is actually the second type of course that we've used Agile, the Agile Minds process for in addition to ninth-grade algebra. So we're hoping these two areas, using this type of instructional approach, will, will pay dividends for us, and then we can evaluate, and then when it comes time to adopt in a few years a new math, math curriculum, then, you know, we may decide this is the way we need to go for everything, not just freshmen and, and the seniors, but everything in between.
Thank you. The board's aware that the district was selected this past year to, this is kind of legislative post audit efficiency study program. There's three audits that are done each year, a small district, a median district, and a large district. We were notified back in September, I think, that we've all been selected as the, the large district to participate in that, in this audit. The process started with, I think, a few phone calls in December, picked up a little bit in January, where we had the three, I believe, of the legislative post audit team that came out and met, did some tours in our building, spent a day, a better part of a day with us. And I want to say, a few weeks after that, we had two people return and spend, they spent the whole day, that same amount of time probably that day, and then a lot of data requests from staff and a lot of time invested in this. They did a survey, I think, through the email of, of all of our employees early in the process, but I know we have a lot of staff who have a lot of time committed to it. So Friday, the report was issued to the Legislative Post Audit Committee, and we're gonna take some time tonight, we're gonna try to be fairly brief, but we're gonna try to run through recommendations. And there were some concerns that came up, but there also were some, some things that we've learned, and so I want to, I want to share a little bit. And while I know some of this is a review for the board, I think it's important to note for the community, some of these things that, that may not have been contained in the report, but I think are important. So the Board of Education Administration staff, USD 457, have long been committed to operating efficiently. In that spirit, beginning in nineteen ninety-six, the district began using a process referred to as program budgeting, which divided our budget into fifteen to eighteen different program areas, areas such as transportation, elementary instruction, facilities and maintenance, health services, building administration, et cetera. Each program area formed a committee, including staff and community members, and was provided a line item budget for that particular program. These committees were then tasked with developing budget proposals at various levels, typically ninety-five, ninety-eight, a hundred percent, and occasionally a hundred percent plus of their current budget. The committees had great latitude in adjusting how these various functions of each program area were accomplished. Later in the process, each year, a larger group, made up also of community members and district staff members, spent two long evenings listening to presentations and prioritizing the individual program proposals. At the end of that process, individual programs faced reductions in fifteen of the twenty years the program was used, and overall district spending was reduced in thirteen of those years. During the early years of that process, reductions often occurred with supplies and materials in those budgets, but after a few years of the process, efficiencies could only be found by reducing positions and people. It is important to note also that when programs were funded at a hundred percent of their prior year's budget, each program was still forced to improve efficiency as there was no adjustment made for inflation and the rising cost for items in these budgets. This program was suspended after the fourteen-fifteen school year because it was no longer feasible to cut programs in this manner. Quite frankly, continued cuts would have made many of these program areas dysfunctional. The district still strives to find efficiencies, but those now are identified in a broader or strategic manner. For example, in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, the district reduced five and a half administrative positions. I share this information with the board and the community to highlight the, the fact that the system, that our system over the last twenty years has, has worked very hard to be efficient and created a high level of fish, of efficiency, and in some cases created situations where important functions that still have to be done have been assumed by, by others because due to the cuts, there was simply nobody else left in those particular settings to do those jobs. I was very optimistic about this audit process when we started this process. As a matter of fact, when I started my tenure as superintendent in the summer of two thousand and fifteen, I had a number of conversations with my leadership team about volunteering for this process. They take volunteers, and if nobody's volunteered by the first of September, then they randomly select some, some district. Ultimately, we decided not to volunteer because of the amount of time that was gonna be required of staff to participate. During the audit, the staff from the Legislative Post Audit Group was always courteous and professional, and I believe our, our district staff was also very accommodating and worked very hard to provide the information and experience requested by the Legislative Post Audit Team. And this experience has provided some valuable information for the district that we will use now and in the future. And some examples, and you'll hear about this in a little bit, the National Center for Education Statistics publishes a school facilities planning guide, and the worksheet that our staff developed after learning about that reference will be very helpful for us to analyze our custodial staffing levels. There was a template to project savings through closing a school building, which I think would, is helpful for us. And then there was a new part of this audit, we were the first district this was ever done with, is my understanding. There was an, an IT security audit that was done in a confidential manner because of the nature of the materials, and we'll have an executive session tonight to discuss the results of that. As was stated in our written response letter, there are a number of items in, in the report in which the district disagrees, for which we provided additional documentation. Unfortunately, much of that additional documentation was not included by Legislative Post Audit in their final report. You have much of that in front of you tonight, as does the public on your tables. While we respect the work that the audit team performed, we believe it may have been a better use of resources to focus on fewer areas and conduct a deeper and more extensive review in those areas. For a number of items in the report, the district has conducted what we believe to be a more comprehensive and detailed analysis, and it would have been very beneficial to have the opportunity to have conversations with the post audit team regarding our efforts to thoroughly analyze these areas. I also want to share the final stages of the audit seem very hurried from the district's perspective, and we saw that as a lost opportunity to make the process more collaborative, allow us to, us to better understand the basis for the recommendations contained in the report, and ultimately make effective adjustments and changes. We're gonna share here in a moment those recommendations, and we're gonna try to do it as briefly as possible, but I do want to thank Mr. Frank, the Legislative- uh, as briefly as possible, but I do wanna thank Mr. Frank, the Legislative Post Auditor, and his team for their efforts on our behalf. I wanna point out that the district will continue to identify ways to operate efficiently, and will carry out our important mission of educating Garden City students. Um, and, uh, and at this point, we're gonna go through and, and look at the specific recommendations.
So we'll start off with the first, um, LPA recommendation, uh, which was implementation of various energy-saving strategies. Um, LPA believes that we can save additional dollars through more efficient use of energy. Just to note, back in two thousand two to two thousand six, the district did participate in an energy management program. Uh, we contracted with a firm that oversaw the project, and we also had an energy manager on staff. Uh, by two thousand six, the cost savings no longer justified this position, and that, um, individual was transferred to another position, basically worked themselves out of a job, which is always good. Um, but as time has passed, behaviors have changed, um, equipment has aged. We do believe that there probably are some opportunities for the district to generate savings through, uh, monitoring energy usage, education, and behavioral modifications. Um, John Geist, our new, uh, director of plant facilities, has some extensive, um, experience in this area. Um, so we believe that we can manage the program ourselves. Um, John did not have time to add this to his list of duties, he felt he was quite, quite, quite full. So we will need to hire an employee to coordinate, um, this program. So that is why there's actually a difference, um, in the savings. Uh, we will begin this program next year, the seventeen-eighteen school year. We do intend to hire an individual to help us with this task. Um, John will supervise that employee. Um, LPA estimates the estimated savings at three hundred and ninety thousand. We estimate our target of three hundred and thirty thousand. I mean, we're not really guaranteed that we can save that much, but that's our target. Um, and the difference then would be the additional employee that we are gonna hire.
I'll talk a little bit about, um, their recommendations in terms of IT. Uh, they had two essentially, one that we centralized our IT support, and the other that we reduced the number of IT positions we have. We have kind of a mixed model. We have some centralized IT staff here at central office, and then we also have what we call SISOPS out of individual buildings. We've used our, our model pretty effectively over many years. This year, we did lose some SISOPS at a couple of buildings, so we attempted to centralize in those buildings for, from December of two thousand sixteen till the end of, uh, well, the first of January two thousand seventeen. But we had a lot of complaints from principals and staff that they weren't being served efficiently and effectively, and so we discontinued that centralized support model. Um, every year, Roxy has a committee that looks at her entire budget, including IT staff. And so she annually looks at the efficiency and effectiveness of that staff. Um, this year, as you know, you, as a board, recommended that we start to explore, um, moving technology down into K-eight levels. And so at this time, we don't feel it would be beneficial to either decentralize or cut IT staff until some decisions are made in that area. It's not that we won't look at it. It's not that we won't consider making changes along the way as needed, but right now, we don't think that, that that would be very beneficial. In fact, we think it would have a negative impact on students and staff. In our discussion, just a little aside, um, when Dr. Carlin was talking about program budgeting, when we made those cuts, a lot of people took on different jobs. And if you look at our SISOPS, a lot of them are listed as state testing coordinators for their buildings when it comes time to state testing, because they do so much of that work. So I think that, that's an example of the auditors not looking at the whole picture, but just the position itself. Um, anyway, the LPA savings estimate was anywhere from two hundred and seventy to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars annually, based on reducing eight point five IT staff. We even questioned how they came up with eight point five. We, we came up with a different number. Um, after providing that documentation, they still didn't support our recommendation. And so although we realized we could save some money here, if we followed the recommendations, this would be an example of, um, looking at efficiency in terms of economics versus efficiency in, in terms of customer service. And at this time, we're not willing to, to do that.
You know what I might point out? You heard Mr. Raymer just a few minutes ago talk about his frustrations with having to get technology support by calling Texas and waiting to hear back from him until the end of the day or the next day. And that's one of the fears we have with centralizing our support, is that we wouldn't be able to get to the teachers and the students who need the support and the time they need.
Yes, I mean, also, here, the SISOPS, um, that are at the school are also kind of unique because it's not a regular, I hate to say regular IT, but there's not a better, I can't think of a better way to say it right now.
Right. How we kind of explained it to the auditors was, they're more of a paraposition that have an interest in IT support, but they're not formally trained IT technicians. So they're kind of a level below IT technician, would that be a way, in terms of our peers?
And they have other jobs.
Right.
Correct. Kind of like a translator. Like you translate, but you have other duties.
Exactly.
Uh, the next recommendation from LPA was the reduction of up to eleven custodial positions. And this is actually where Dr. Carlin mentioned the, um, National Center for Education Statistics School Planning and Facilities Guide that they have provided us with this benchmark. Um, we looked at the analysis that they did, um, we kind of felt like it was a fifty-thousand-foot view of what our custodians do and how much area, um, they should be able to clean, um, in the amount of time that they're allotted. Uh, we took their work kind of as a, as a springboard, and we did a deeper dive on it. And we looked at, um, how many, um, square feet of an average elementary building is level two versus level three cleaning? Um, and level two cleaning is defined as the uppermost standard for school cleaning. It's generally reserved for restrooms, special education areas, kindergarten areas, or food service areas. So those are gonna be areas that need a little bit more time, take a little bit longer to clean. Level three cleaning is the norm for most school facilities, so that would be just a regular, um, gen ed classroom, nothing fancy about it. And so obviously, we have a mixture in our buildings of those types of areas. So we looked at how many square feet, on average, does an elementary building have of each of those kinds of areas, and how much time it would take to clean that amount of square footage. We also looked at how much time do our custodians spend doing non-routine cleaning? Um, as Dr. Carlin and Renee mentioned, through program budgeting, our staff has now gotten to the point where we don't get to wear just one hat. They are wearing very multiple hats, and so oftentimes during the day, our custodians are doing things other than getting to block out the world and getting to clean. Uh, they're spending time in the lunchroom, they're spending time in, in that same area for breakfast, uh, time. Um, unfortunately, our kiddos have accidents, and they may grow up in the middle of the other day, and that needs to be cleaned up. Um, so there are things that they do besides general cleaning. We allowed for that time. Um, and so then we took that deeper dive and said, now we know all these facts, how much time would it take to clean each of our buildings? And we went building by building by building and took a look and, and compared that to how much staff time do we currently have allotted to that building? And you can see in, in the, um, information that we gave you, kind of that spreadsheet that we did. And when we did that level of analysis, uh, we found that we had two schools that had a point five FTE more allocated to them than what they maybe needed based on this benchmark, which would be a one FTE reduction, and we are going to implement that reduction in the seventeen-eighteen school year. So, um, that is why there is a difference between the LPA savings estimate. Uh, they had two hundred and sixty to four hundred and seventy thousand. Um, our deeper dive look said, yes, there is, we do have a, um, a little bit of an overage, and we have one FTE that we can reduce, which will save us about forty thousand dollars.
I'm gonna talk about the next recommendation, which is a reduction of elementary clerical positions. The LPA recommended the reduction of seven elementary clerical positions. Uh, in their analysis, they looked at title only as secretary. Um, they declined to look at the entire front office, staff and functions and duties. Uh, to expand a little bit on what Ms. Scott said with our IT personnel, multiple hats, different jobs. Um, the LPA, we tried to get them to take a look at that as, as a whole staff or what those functions were, but they really just took it out of the job description. They were, they were paid as a secretary, and that's all they looked at, not in terms of what those duties that they perform in. Um, so we did a little more investigating on our own, and we contacted peer districts identified by the LPA, and, uh, through our analysis, and what you'll find in the attachments. If you'll flip back to the third page there, it's attached to C one. Then you'll see that, um, we've done a little breakdown here of our peer districts, um, their elementary schools, a little bit about their demographics, and then provided, uh, each position that they have. So again, not just secretary positions, but how many people are truly in that front office? Um, and so that carries through the next several pages. Um, you'll also see a sheet that, uh, has some pink, uh, light pink or green highlighted areas. Um, that's again, more analysis that we did, and in this particular attachment, um, we tried to list any one of those people, staff members, that would be in the front office staff. We're just trying to take a look at where we at, um, with our staff in comparison with them, because we have things in place that other districts didn't, and vice versa. Um, maybe we're calling in a secretary, but another district might be calling in a clerk. And because the LPA only looked at that title of secretary, um, we felt like that data was a bit skewed. So based on our analysis, we found that USD four five seven staff members are as efficient, or in some cases, more efficient, uh, than those peers. A couple other notes in terms of the analysis that LPA provided was, in one of the peer districts, Dodge City that was listed upfront, um, they were excluded from this initial, uh, analysis by LPA. And when we questioned them about it, they said they only looked at the efficient school districts in comparison with us. Um, but you can also look that Dodge City has apparently a zone listed in their front office staff, and a clerk also listed in their front office staff, in addition to those that are titled secretary. Um, we looked again as a, as a whole, based on their function, based on the duties they perform. Two big areas to note, uh, nutrition factors into that. Uh, three of the four school districts that we compared to don't require their office staff to handle any of those nutrition functions, uh, which we do. That takes them out of the office at times. Uh, and probably another big one for us in terms of student safety is, um, the medical, um, aspect of it in terms of students coming in and needing medications. Um, we don't have full-time nurses in all of our buildings. Some of our peers do, and so that's another function of those secretaries that they would do. And there's also a sheet, uh, provided to you there with the number of office visits and medication disbursements that we have, uh, which we feel is a big factor in terms of that staffing needs that we have. Uh, so at this time, the district declines to implement this recommendation, because it will have a negative effect on student safety and on the services that are extracted by all of our stakeholders, um, students, teachers, staff, and, and of course, community. Um, so there's a discrepancy there. LPA savings estimate of a hundred and seventy-five thousand to two hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, we do not feel like there's, uh, savings to be had there, uh, simply because we could retitle our people if needed and get to the same level, um, that other peers have.
And I wanna just jump in and add there is, I don't wanna put this in practical terms. So they weren't looking at our biggest elementaries or our littlest, it was the.